From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral, Health and Shrine Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
601, folks, the meeting's going to go order and get started. I appreciate the council being here tonight and may have one absentee, but we've got a good forum here tonight and got a few matters of business we need to handle. Before we get started, we'll welcome our meeting and our guests and stand together and have our indications as well as to do and then our pledge. Our Father in heaven, we thank you that we could live in a free society, Lord. We thank you for the many blessings that we receive through that. Only ask that we might always live in a country such as the United States and give us our freedoms to make choices and do the things that we think are best for our citizens and our nation, our communities, and all that. We ask you to be with us in this meeting tonight with each family, be with our national leaders as they make decisions, try to talk about peace for our other nations that are in war. We love that effort, Lord, and we hope that they're successful in bringing peace into our world. I want to ask this prayer now, Christ. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have five items on our agenda tonight. Just like mentioned before we go into our agenda, that tomorrow week is our election day for our municipal elections. We ask our citizens to get out and vote and vote for the candidate of your choice. And of course, before we meet again, we'll have Labor Day in the mix and we'll be talking about changes that we'll need to make. City Hall will be closed on that date. If you're a Monday garbage customer, we'll be getting your garbage on Tuesday. The agenda is a little bit amended tonight, so we've got another item we'll talk about at the end. Item one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the August 4th council meeting. We'd need a motion to approve those. Ross made the motion, we need a second. Sherry made the second for that. Would we all vote for approving? Yes, sir. 100%. Thank you. Item two is a recommendation to change our next scheduled city council meeting to Tuesday, September the 2nd, due to Monday closure for our Labor Day holiday. And we do the motion to make that change in our council meeting date. Got a motion, we've got a second from Ross and Sherry. All those in favor of changing our date to the 2nd? Thank you. That's also 100%. Item three is a recommendation to award to the lowest bid price of $1,222,000 to the contractors of rail construction for the Cooper Lift Station Improvement Project. Grant funds in the amount of $850,027 have been awarded to the Hamilton Water Department through ABM, that's the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, from their Clinton Water State Revolving Loan Fund program to help with this project. Leading this, the Hamilton Water Department owing $372,000 has its obligation for the project. This will totally refurbish the Cooper Lift Station that we've been waiting to work on. I'd recommend that we go ahead with this project. Got a motion from Scott, we've got a second from Wade. All those in favor of awarding? Thank you very much. This is something we need to get done and we'll be proud of this project when it's finished. We've been talking at a work session with the Hamilton Chamber of Commerce and they're asking us to renew our annual commitments with them and I make a recommendation that we approve contributions of $55,300 to the Hamilton Area Chamber of Commerce for assistance with events, event costs for the upcoming 2026 fiscal year. Funds would not be given to the chamber until after October 1st, when the new budget is being approved. And they made a nice presentation at our last work session, a PowerPoint, and we saw this week what they're trying to accomplish for us. Got a motion from Wade, we need a second. They got a second from Scott against people who did first, give that a second. All those in favor of awarding the money to the chamber? They're trying to do a very good job. I think they had a 106 membership or something like this, which is phenomenal compared to the years in past. Item five, there'll be a special meeting held at 12 noon, September the 2nd, 2025, to canvass the election results of the August 26 municipal election pursuit. Alabama law, this meeting must be held on the first Tuesday after the election and may not be a part of the regular city council meeting that will be held the same evening at 6:00 p.m. This special meeting will be held at Hamilton City Hall and the only matter of business conducted will be to canvass the election results. We need a motion to have that meeting. Ross made the motion, we need a second. Second from Scott. All those in favor of hosting that canvass and meeting? Thank you. And item six is a recommendation to amend this agenda and have an item. We'll need a vote for that. Sherry made the motion, we need a second. Second from Ross. All those in favor of amendment? It's brought to our attention today that we have a certificate of deposit number 4357 at People's Trust Bank for an additional seven months at 425. This is to renew the certificate at an interest rate of 4.25%. The current balance of this CD to be renewed is $1,159,311.65. If that would be an acceptable offer from the bank, we'd need to vote on that matter. Second motion. We need a discussion.
The only thing I'm going to bring up is that since we are going to have to spend $400,000, $400,000 on the Cooper Lift Station match and that, that we need to think about taking some of that money out of that CD before we renew it, or do we have enough in the general fund?
This is what we consider as a reserve deposit, but we've earned $159,000 in interest. I thought it would be nice to renew the $1 million certificate and move the earned money to the general fund at this point, since we know we're going to have to come up with some funds. That would be highly likely to sit down, but I'm going to do that. I'm not going to vote on this matter, it's a banking matter, so I'm going to recommend it, but I'm not going to vote on it.
That's fine. Or you want to do it? Yeah, that's fine. I think we're five, but I just wanted to know if we have the other CDs?
This represents the interest we've earned since we bought the certificate, $159,000.
Tom, give that.
Okay. The recommendation then would be to renew the $1 million certificate and move the interest money into the general fund. Could we get a motion and a second on that? Got a motion from Ross, we have a second from Wade. All those in favor of that matter? Okay. Thank you so much. Any other items of business that need to come before us tonight?
Mayor, I'm just going to echo what he said earlier. Eight days from now, we do have an election and it is awfully good that as a people of Hamilton, you get to decide who will represent you for the next four years. So no matter your beliefs, no matter who you like, who you don't like, just make sure you get out there and vote. I believe polls open at 7:00 and close at 7:00. So, you know, 12 hours out of the day, go before, go after, if it doesn't matter, just make sure you get up there and vote. Good luck to all the candidates that are running this time. It's been a pleasure so far. Looking forward to the next two months, three months.
Our final day in office for this administration will be October 31st. The new administration takes the reins and goes forward with it on November 1st. So it's been a joy for me to serve these two administrations. Great people to work with. I'm really pleased with the councils I've worked with and just been phenomenal to see y'all come through with many, many decisions and I thank you for it. Got anything for us?
No words of wisdom.
Come on, give us one.
You're on the spot.
I don't have anything. I usually have things to say, but I don't like to put on the spot.
Anything for us to leave you tonight?
People can still come out to Tigo and City Hall. The remainder this week up until Monday or this Friday or?
As far as trying to do anything in the mail, Thursday, the 21st is the last possible day. They would have to actually bring the application in, which they could vote while they're here. Because we're going to run out of time to do it back and forth on the mail.
The mail is right. You can't come as far?
Thanks for saying that. Now remember, if you're voting absentee, you get it done on time, so your vote would count as an absentee, but there are deadlines and she just mentioned that, so let's remember that. But we encourage you to come out and vote as a citizen. We really want you to do that. We got this award, $1,467,000 to this improvements in our industrial park, but I did note that there is, I believe, a February deadline of next year to get the money spent on this matter, so we probably going to have to let a contract pretty soon on that. We'll look into that and see what, how the logistics work out, but we've got to get that work underway so that the donor of our money don't want to reclaim it from us if we don't get our work done on time. So we've got to do that pretty quick.
It doesn't have to be spent by them, it just has to start it.
Yeah, we've got to make sure that it's allotted to some entity to do the work for us and it's got to be earmarked within for sure. So we want to meet the deadline on that. That's going to be very, very important to our park. I think it's going to really enhance our ability to ask for business. I did have a chance to meet with the CEO of the hospital today from Tucalo, Mr. Wilson, also our hospital administrator, Rose, and Dr. Merklin and I met at lunch today and we talked about some things for the hospital, some services, what's going to be the future of the hospital. I asked for a good deal of things today, services, and they're doing a study, it's not complete yet, and they're going to come back to us and give us the whole rundown on it before they go public with it. Mr. Wilson did say that they're losing some money every year in the operation, roughly $20,000, I'll just say it. And he said that we would come up with some sort of, if the community wants a full-service hospital, it would come up with some kind of tax earmark to the hospital that they might give us better services and more services. So that's something. And I'll just plant that seed where it's going from tonight, that I want people to know that they put that on the table at our meeting today, that if there was some sort of taxation dedicated to the hospital there, that they could probably do a better job for us going forward. Nothing's official on that, but that was a kind of a recommendation from their CEO.
Did they say in their study what they think?
It's probably going to be four or five months before we'll hear anything from the study. They did have compliments of our nursing home that stayed in full all the time. I talked to them about the stream of business that we could give to their specialists in Tucalo and our community, and he said that plays into the equation also, which is why they're doing services so far. He alluded to the fact that they're now managing the Winfield Hospital as well as having services here in county. Always have good services through one facility or the other. But I told him that we'd like to have our cataract surgeon back and we'd like to have some of the other services that we used to offer back at our hospital and, you know, not having it. I said some of our older people don't need to have to drive to destinations, could see a doctor or a specialist. I said it's turning into that kind of game with us and we're very, very interested in keeping all the services we can, love them. I illustrated that. I told him I didn't have any access to driving with them today, but I wanted some commitment from them to give us the services that we need and his love. He didn't rule out anything today, but he said the study was, they will come back to us and tell us some things about the study as soon as possible.
Obviously, no matter, he's sitting here in a couple of months, our hospital's probably important to our community. I mean, without it, it's really, really going to be tough. So I think anybody would commit to having as much as possible. Of course, we don't know what that'd be yet, but it may not.
I talked to about our swing bed program. That's a very important thing when people are trying to regain their health, get back home. The swing bed services are needed and used a lot and they're thinking they can maybe put that in the mix of the nursing home that's.
We need our hospital.
He said probably about a two-day stay in the hospital is all that they would be able to do without transferring to our Cooper Hospital.
Whatever we can do, I'm sure we wouldn't do that. I just had MRI Friday, so I know even the small things are necessary for here and our patients won't have to go to Winfield or anywhere else if we can do it here, so I think the city will commit to do whatever the city can do. Of course, they may not know for a few months, but that's going to be done now. When that time comes, I think the city.
I would rock you guys to the table, but they invited me to the table today and that's my total group.
That was most important, you can speak.
I told them we'd like to have everybody present before maybe as soon as possible.
Just hoping Freddie goes with it?
I thought we were going, there's Tom. Tom, come on in. You got here just in time. We were about to adjourn, but we're going to listen to you.
Oh, thanks. Good night. It's okay if I come on in, Tom.
Yeah, come on with the podium.
Thanks, Mayor and Council.
Can I just speak good?
Oh, yeah. Where is that? I just talk really loud. Mayor and Council, thanks. Just give a quick update on the growing Alabama project. The city is working with Allen County Council, County Office. There's some homework. Derek Strick will help on this as well. There's that initial homework you have to do where the donor, I think they call it, makes a reservation. That's, again, the amount is 1.467 million. They have 30 days to make the reservation, the donors, and then the city has 60 days to receive the funds. They're wired to you and that's sort of the transaction part of it. And I think as far as I know, everything's on schedule and all the paperwork's like all through. There may be a few more requirements. The mayor's been very helpful on that. There, we talked before about how there's no match involved, but you do have, there's an engineer that works for the city that kind of does oversight and helps to construct a firm to design. They did, Seame and Associates helped us put the application together. They probably, it's up to you to kind of who you all hire, but they do know the part well. They worked on the seeds project and they helped with this application together. They've given me a sort of an updated proposal. It's everything we talked about before. The total is roughly 60,000, 67,000. That's for construction oversight, construction documents. They basically deliver it up to the contractor to be that $1.46 million. That's, they're qualified, again, it's up to you all, but I do have a proposal from them. This is hot, the press, I can offer by more information, send it to the mayor and so forth. The other thing that's come up, I probably should explain this a little better too, is we had two bids when we applied and because that's how the program, the state, the growing Alabama, figures out how much to award you, award you all with 1.467 million. You do not have to hire the group that provides that. That's an estimate you put into the grant proposal. You'll hire the firm based upon whatever procedure legally you do to hire a construction firm, kind of like you're dealing with your track. It's possible, we're trying to explore, just as, it's just food for thought, even though you're the applicant, you have to be the applicant because you're an economic development organization, you own the land, that's how the growing Alabama program works, you're going to receive the funds. It's possible that your industrial development board could be the client to the contractor if that's a route you prefer. The advantage there would be, they may not have to go through as much of a bid, formal bid process as you all would as far as advertising and hiring. I think, are you required to take the lowest bid? Which, I mean, that may be how you want to approach it, or maybe you want to take more of a qualifications approach. I think if they're your vehicle, it's possible you could take an alternative approach for your hiring, kind of a combination of best and lowest as your contractor. We're trying to get clarification on whether you can do that, but Seame thought that was something that some other committees have done. Just think about it, no hurry on that. When the money is wired to you, if you have an engineering firm working for you, like Seame, will do a kickoff meeting and that's the kind of, we can talk about that at the kickoff meeting, but at some point you'll hire the contractor by whatever legal process you do to hire that.
Is it fair that next year we have to have the money allocated to the job, to the job? We have to have it all earmarked?
There's some kind of clock. I should, I probably should check that. You have, I mean, you have plenty of time to do the project, but you'll, I think you have to complete the project within a certain amount of time. That, I should have been, part of the reason that, other than the fact that it's for informational purposes for the council, we did get a question or two from local contractors about, does this mean you're, they're just going to go ahead and hire that one group? No, it's a competitive, it's a competitive bid or selection, depending on how, again, whether you are, the IDP is.
Somebody local could be there.
Correct. Yes, they will be invited to either bid or compete through the selection process.
They'll need to be licensed and bonded.
Yeah, partly, I think, I got that question in IDP too. We'll get more information on what their requirements are as far as certifications, but I think a lot of that's taken care of with the, with the current kind of the standard state of Alabama. They're building industrial buildings, I think they have to be a general contractor and all that kind of stuff. Or, well, they don't have to be, they may not have to be a general contractor, but they need all that, I think, as a matter of course anyway, but there may be growing Alabama requirements about qualifications and certifications.
That's kind of a new animal for me. I've never seen this exact type of grant and even though we're very priesty, we need to follow all the rules that apply so that nobody tries to reclaim the funds. We want to use those funds in our park and use every dollar of it that was awarded to us.
Absolutely. We'll make sure we have all the, between engineering, legal, and I probably won't be super up on that kind of stuff, but we'll make sure you have all the resources to make sure that you're docking all the items across the board.
Well, we need to award the engineering pretty soon so they can kind of handle all the things.
I guess it depends on how long we think it'll take to make that transaction. You have 60 days, but then you have to take 60 days. I think if, I'm just estimating, it'd probably be good to get them under contract, some looking at engineer firm that's going to work this project for a period of the next 20 to 30 days, but do you have to go through a competitive process on that?
I don't expect any.
Not, yeah, not for engineers.
Professional services.
And they tell us they can't bid, like engineers can't bid anyways.
You don't have to deal with professional services.
You select an engineer, but I would say try to do that the next 20 to 30 days.
That was my only concern is that February date. It was a little vague, I think it was a commence by that date. Yeah, so what does that mean? You know, as far as, I think it's just that you will start the project and then the other commitment is you have to finish the project.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, the commence date just mean you hire the firm and they go out there, take the picture, so probably they're somewhat guarding against people that have a prospect and then sometimes the prospect's doggone. They go back and have to do a bunch of analysis and all of a sudden this, the EEO starts delaying and they don't want you to delay for two years, three years. You'll be fine. You're going to hit your timelines fine.
Because usually the engineering firms are the one that kind of puts it out for bid with all the specs and stuff.
Yeah, oh yeah, they'll definitely help guide you on all that. Other than the, whatever kind of legal requirements for advertising and stuff, they may not, I don't know, does that vary from community to community or not?
Not to say, the public works have been saying three weeks, yeah, for every public work. Unless, like you said, you choose a different route and you can just issue out a request for bid and then extra work and stuff.
I'd like to commend the industrial board for stepping up and acting very interested in this project and who want to know what's going on and I think they want to have an active role if it's possible. I would be for that. I would be for that. Do you all have further questions for Tom? Tom, we thank you. Scott, you can end with a slide. You're always welcome to come to our meeting.
Thank you.
Rich, thanks very much. There's no other business we wouldn't even motion to adjourn. Scott made the motion. Ross made the second. All in favor of adjourn?
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral, Hail and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Soligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.